I'd like to call the order of regular meeting of council on the 8th of February 1st, 2021.
Is that the February 1st, 2021, regular council meeting agenda being adopted as presented?
House of Minutes, 2.1, January 21, regular.
Is that the minutes on Monday, January 18th, 2021, regular meeting of council being adopted as presented?
Secretary of Justice Mckinsey, on favor. 2, January 12, 2021, special meeting of council.
House of Minutes on Monday, January 12, 2021, special meeting of council being adopted as presented?
Secretary of Justice, on favor. Any business related to the minutes, council? Consent agenda, 7.1.
Is that all items on the Monday, February 1st, 2021, consent agenda being moved for information?
Secretary. House of Representatives, on favor. Any business, council, present the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. 7.3?
The discussion, Secretary, House of Representatives, on favor.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that the District of Tumblr Ridge sends a letter of support to Nav Canada regarding possible service suggestions slated to start March 2021, and using the letter template included.
Would we like to add anything to the template letter that revolves more particularly around Tumblr Ridge? Although I don't disagree with anything that you've said there, just a couple of points come to mind for me is a loss of Greyhound service in the area around East as well, which isn't covered in the letter. Another means of transportation that we've lost, also for medical appointments in Tumblr Ridge. We have residents, Tumblr have to always go to Dawson or Fort St. John to fly to these other places if there's a reduced amount of medical flights. It really affects us that way in Tumblr Ridge, not for a direct medical flight for an emergency, but for something that you had to go to get a procedure or something like that. May force you to drive further to, we have to go to French George now or whatever, but those are two specific things to our community that we could add in that letter. Is there any flavor of counsel to add something like that to the letter?
Oh, hey, Kirk. And I see it's causally important, so why don't you maintain our search on?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. If this letter is just going to Nav Canada over here in a lot of studies, maybe that information wouldn't pertain to this letter, but it should be, it could be in a letter that we have going up through the NCLG regarding resolutions or other things. I think it's a good topic to keep, that we should have maybe respond to this.
God, his good ones for sure, especially the, he said service justice. Plus, service of luxury will be over there in this Nav Canada, but possibly in the district. So, do you want to make a motion after this one?
Yeah, I think it's important. Yeah, so I'll put a motion on the floor that we direct staff to add to the letter some verbiage around topics related to Tumblr Ridge, specifically the loss of Greyhound service in the region and our lack of availability to get to medical appointments.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Where are we directing that letter to specifically?
Adding to the letter.
Just a report coming to where we add the letter?
Adding to the NCLG.
Yeah, the letter that we're sending, we're sending one letter, right? There's a lot of people CC'd in that letter, so that's why the thought is transportation ministers, or French George Columbia, a lot of rights.
I think we're going forward to 7.4. I don't think you're concerned or question regarding this letter is whether or not any local contractors are prepared to. Council, I think, we can always, but, and now, to kill two spot shields. As you remember. It's nice that all this restoration is getting done, or done on local contract, and what is it?
And I had something very similar as well, and basically I said, will there be any opportunities for local employment? So not just necessarily the contractors that are coming in, but also postings for local employment, local newspapers, things like that.
Did I get a second on that? Sorry?
All seconded.
Any other discussion, council? Please, on my favor. On a new business, 9.1, signing authorities update for the 8th of February 1st, 2021, Director of Local Services requesting council approval for the need either to administer a roster.
You added a signing authority for the district of Tumblr Ridge.
I'd like to move that the district's signing authorities of more savings and credit union, Lakeview Credit Union Bank of Montreal, Royal Bank DSET, and Municipal Finance Authority are updated to reflect the addition of Jennifer Thompson, Chief Administration Officer.
Secondary, Counselor, House of Representatives.
Couple of points here, just as to why this took so long. Why are we over four months into the January market and this takes so long?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, through counsel. So, there's no formal policy for signing authority that we have, and just looking at getting checks and negotiable instruments signed at this point. I would like to have this sign in authority so that I can still ensure that all the payments and everything are made for the district on time.
I had no objections against that. I think you should have had the signing authority a lot sooner than four months. Your probation period is longer than four months, so it should not have anything to do with your probation period. You need to make these decisions when you come in in a more timely fashion. And I would, I would think that a request to change our procedure to have this completed in a more timely manner would be something that should be discussed within this council, and this may be the point which we should do that. You know, along with that, this brought a thought to my mind that we should possibly be requesting to create an onboarding package as well as an offboarding package for the next councils to deal with hiring dismissals and quitting of CAOs. It's the hardest thing for us to deal with when we are in here. I've had to go through it twice now, and there is no formalized process. There's nothing that carries forward from council to council to say, make sure you've checked this, and these checks and balances should go forward. Emails should be checked. We need to make sure that we secure this, we secure that, keys to the building. You know, I think a process should also be developed around that, that this has brought, this to my attention at this time as well. So I don't know what council feels about that, but it's something that our current CAO would probably have a good time to make up for us.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I think we should maybe have it added to a PPC meeting, to have a solid discussion about this, and have a main topic.
Hey, any other comments or questions for us, or?
Yeah, can I request that we add to a upcoming PPC meeting that we look at a change in procedure to have this process completed in a more timely fashion? And that we request to create an onboarding as well as an offboarding package for discussion at the next PPC meeting.
9.2, visitor interpretive center operating agreement, reported February 1st, 2021, from Grand River Local Services, during renewal of visitor information operating agreement with Tumblr Ridge Global GeoPark, requesting approval of the funding entered about the next three years to reflect regional rate of inflation.
The recommendation on the floor, the council renews the operating agreement with Tumblr Ridge Global GeoPark Society for a term of two years beginning February 10th, 2021, and expiring February 9th, 2024, with the provision of funding the amount of $150,000 per year. And that council directs administration to issue an expression of interest for the operation of the visitor interpretive center should the Tumblr Ridge Global GeoPark Society choose not to exercise its renewal option.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Whereas I am in a agreement that we should continue our operating agreement with the GeoPark, I believe the Geo, I support the GeoPark in its request to add additionally $100,000 to operating budgets. The amount they're requesting is 5% higher than previous years. I think we should be supporting them in recognizing that cost of doing business is higher, and they are adopting units on the climate that we are in.
Comments, questions?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I will be going against the recommendation from the floor. I also agree that the amount that the society has asked is reasonable, and that the regional rate of inflation should be added to the upcoming years as well.
Well, we have a contract in place with them, and it says it's for a request of renewal of the agreement. It states that the same terms and conditions would apply for the following three years. So when we put this in place three years ago, we knew that this could continue on for six years at $150,000 a year. So why would we arbitrarily come in and give them more money to operate the visitor information center because we're talking about inflation? Last year, there was a negative inflation in Canada, and there's talks about it to be negative inflation here this year, so you should take more money away from them. The Global GeoPark Society was over there in that visitor information center, was shut down for two and a half years last year, was it not, or two and a half months? But still managed to spend all the money. That was their opportunity, when they were shut down for two and a half months, to save some money, put the money through to the government, or get money back from the government, and save money for our taxpayers of Tumblr Ridge. They've signed an agreement, we have one in place that says they will run it for another three years at the same price, and why would we give them more money? The whole point of this, after six years, is they're supposed to generate business income in the community. They're supposed to help businesses. That's the whole idea, the whole premise behind the GeoPark. When the Tumblr Ridge Chamber of Commerce was running it, they were willing to run it for the same price for the entire time. They didn't get the contract, the GeoPark got the contract. So to me, why would we give them more money to shut down for two and a half months, but they still need to spend the same amount of money? It's bad fiscal management, in my mind. We're here to do what's best for the taxpayer in Tumblr Ridge, not the Global GeoPark.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So, Counselor Howell made a comment, inflation was negative last year. From Statista.com, it was 0.6, so there's still inflation happening. So, I mean, I'd happily entertain your source for the negative inflation, but at this time, you see inflation is still affecting us. I think when we look at these organizations, it's not just dollars and cents, it's loyalty to organizations that are providing a service to us. And at the time, yes, they went into this knowing these are the deals, but I think we can show a little to them, saying, hey, we understand the cost of living is going up. It makes sense to keep the people working there satisfied and content, and they're not asking for real inflation, they're asking for, ah, I mean, so that's less than even inflation. It'll, I believe, give us a better service that they're providing to the district and our residents who are coming out of town versus if we did not. And $8,000, I believe, is worth it, if that. Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. There's one thing to be loyal to the current operator, but there are also a speed and equal opportunity for others to operate. So I don't understand why they would have the first right to ask for more when this is going to be our P, or equal bidding opportunity.
No, the original contract had a renewal option, that's why they.
But that's after the term which is up, so now we should go back to anybody that can.
This is your term with renewal option for any of these. That's why they're, that's why we have to go.
Yeah, so if we're going to talk inflation rates on the, you can get your different inflation rates from different things, but if you're talking to an inflation rate 0.62, that's $930 for $150,000. So we're talking, we'll give them a $930 for the 0.62 point of inflation, fine. When you're talking also the inflation rate that, you know, they're asking for, would you say eight and five percent or something like that? What rate of inflation are you using in Canada? Are you using 2%, like the majority of people use, or are you using something higher? Regardless of inflation rates, they were shut down for two and a half months, but still managed to spend all the money. For two and a half months, a building that we had over there, that we had asked them to operate, they couldn't operate because of COVID-19. There was your opportunity to save money, you didn't save money, so therefore, to me, we can't give you any more money to run the building going forward. To me, it should stay at $150,000 per year, as per the contract that they signed three years ago.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I agree with a lot of the points that Counselor Howell is making, but also, if we are looking at businesses that have shut down for two month periods, with our own community center as an example, you still have people working behind the scenes, doing business for the, if it wasn't for UNESCO, or keeping, you know, information flowing about visitor services, what have you. They were also planning and getting, preparing all the toolkits that went out. Most of this increase in cost is coming directly from photocopying, because, and this wasn't just, you know, getting prepared, because we did still have a high visitor intake into the community. So with that, you know, people touch a brochure, they had to redo it, you know, and that was kind of the initial cost. Inflation, I do believe, everything has a rate increase, you know, that is reasonable to me as well. And so I am fine with that. What I would not want to do is vote this down and then see it going up to a RFP, because at this point, I think GeoPark Society is the best group in town right now to be running that community center. We have, you know, with the GeoCenter going up across the street, with all the connections that we have going with Destination BC, they have been a real promoter to the area, and I mean, a part of our strategic plan for a long time. And to shuffle that around, that group, if we are interested in keeping the designation, has got to be held somewhere, and they have got that, you know, they are well trained in putting up that visitor experience. The, our GeoPark executive, our executive director at the GeoPark sits on many boards that help out Tumblr Ridge, and not just, it takes a load off of our economic development officer. So we really want to think hard if we wanted to put that out to an RFP, and realize the costs that might, maybe taking that group out of there would cost us in the long term.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Counselor Curry makes a great point about, you know, what happens when these shutdowns occur, right? Like, you have people's jobs that are there, at least, like, we talk a lot about trying to promote economic development, job preservation, job creation. Are we trying to tell these organizations that need to cut jobs, we need to cut people's jobs? I don't think that's necessary. Trying to trade a people. You made a mistake because you maintained positions in the community, people are still working behind the scenes. I know this. You know, going with that goal, and moving beyond that to GeoPark maintaining a position. Whenever there's changeover, things get lost, you know, services get dropped. I mean, I think we, you know, what happens when we have transitioned. And, you know, I think they've done a good job, and I think we need to have a good reason why we would not continue with them.
And just for clarity, the recommendation doesn't say that we don't continue with them. The recommendation says we continue with them unless they choose not to continue. Then we have to send it to an RFP. I don't want us to have to come back to another meeting to discuss that they didn't want to do it, and it goes to another RFP. Council already, or staff already has direction, should that occur. That's the idea of mine.
Yeah, and I think it leads up into being consistent. Signing these contracts with multiple groups, and even when we're signing the contracts whether there's an extension or not. And there's other things we can talk about, regardless of the golf course restaurants, anything else, we ask them to do the same thing. So why would we change it in the middle of a term where they want to resign for three years? I have a hard time, even a council here, with different amounts we're going to charge for rent to the restaurant. If it's signed contract, we're going to go with it. To me, we need to be consistent. Consistent. We always talk about groups and offer profits, and I'm not saying the GeoPark is a bad group, but they've done an amazing job over there. Not just with the people they work with, but the board as well. But the same aspect, consistency makes that, maybe it's not a group that fits on it, if they decide to pay, maybe they can be a business that fits on it. So I think it needs to be consistent coming from the council, when we talk about some of the businesses that we do in RFPs.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. We took the wording from what the GeoPark had, could define it better than the regional rate of inflation, and you can have a percentage that you want to put on there right now, and just have an inflation rate of X. Or, you know, further defining, having us further define what regional rate would be used.
As far as the original contract goes, I don't know if we have, it's a part of the renewal, at the same price, is that correct?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. You are correct in that the renewal clause did state at the same rate, however, council has the ability to change that, right? So staff didn't want to, you know, recommend that this is the only choice, but it did say on the same terms and conditions. So you can still change that, but it did state that at $150,000, the same terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Can I get Counselor Howell's motion read back to me, please?
Just one moment, please. Sorry, I, I just wanted to make sure I had the exact word there. So, "that council renews the operating agreement with the Tumblr Ridge Global GeoPark Society for a term of three years beginning February 10th, 2021, and expiring February 9th, 2024, with provision of funding in the amount of $150,000 per year, and that council directs administration to issue an expression of interest for the operation of the Visitor Interpretive Center should the Tumblr Ridge Global GeoPark not exercise this process."
The end wording was, "should the Tumblr Ridge Global GeoPark Society choose not to exercise?"
Choose not to.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. As for how the motion goes right now, on my favor, and for the $8,250, I'm sure the Global GeoPark can find other ways to come up with that money, whether it's people's service grab, and they can all answer for that, and how defined the amount, and what they're going to use, for a specific dollar amount, or say it is a printing cost, or something like that. This is a point towards what you're recommending.
Okay, on my favor.
One other thing I noticed in this report too is, so staff has mentioned it as the Visitor Interpretive Center Operating Agreement. Tumblr Ridge Global GeoPark owns the Visitor Information Center, and the actual contract is called the Visitor Interpretive Center Operating Agreement. I think that we should definitely call this contract, in my mind, the Tumblr Ridge Visitor Information Center contract, because we are on the verge of having an interpretive center that may also require a contract. So I think that we should change that wording in there, and I'd like to put a motion forward to that, provided it doesn't cause too much trouble for staff.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So the legal name is, of it, is the Visitor Interpretive Center. So that is the legal name?
That is the legal name of the building, or that is the legal name of the contract? Because it says Visitor Information Center on the signage from the government.
I'll have Ms. Torville respond a little more in detail for that. Ms. Torville?
Good morning, Mayor, to the council. The legal name of the building is the Visitor Interpretive Center, and that was when it was starting to, when we were starting to build it, and it turned out to be that name, Visitor Interpretive Center. It gets interchanged with Visitor Information Center quite a bit, but we do legal documents, we try to keep it as legal as we can.
So it's also listed as the Tumblr Ridge Visitor Center on the internet, on the website, that's, we go to look for it. But we're still going to have the concern that if we are building an interpretive center, are we not? So I think that's something that staff needs to contemplate, because we're likely going to make another contract for the interpretive center that comes up. And that, to me, is going to be very confusing to the common person in Tumblr Ridge. What's the information center, and what's the interpretive center?
I just like, you know, would like to reach out to the society, just to find out how their funding works, because Destination BC gives $10,000 a year for running the information center. So just to see if interpretive is going to make a difference, if it has to be information, just before we were to clarify or to change that, I would like to reach out to the group, just to find out a little bit about that aspect.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So the proposed that is coming up is the Geo Interpretive Center. So it does have a different name, but it, because it is Geo Interpretive Center, but, you know, definitely clarification can be found. Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So legal names can be changed, it would just, of course, take time and a financial commitment in order to do so.
Mayor Bertrand, I'd defer this to another meeting, before we move forward on looking at legal terms and just get an understanding of what's going on.
Before we move forward on looking at legal terms and just get an understanding of what's going on.
Do we want to ask for a quick staff report? I mean, it's not going to be a lot. It's going to be, you know, a few with this or.
I think at this time, I think just a couple of phone calls before getting a report together. Just to see, because I believe that the Visitor Information Center is the Visitor Information Center. Across the street is the Interpretive Center. So I think we've got two different. As far as the lease goes, it's the Visitor Information Center. That's my, that's my understanding, but just checking.
Counselor. It doesn't directly provide for staff to, our motion or intention here. I mean, if you're good with that, the way Counselor Kirby has said it, I'm good with that.
It is a word interpreted. As far as contracts go, I think it would be okay.
Great.
9.3 COVID impact report updated. Updated February 11st, 2021. Director Finance, I have counsel updated information on the impact of COVID-19 in the district of Tumbler Ridge. Whether any other counsel to discuss. How? Discussion.
So after reading the email responses between our Director of Finance and a lady by the name of Jennifer Richardson, the Policy Analyst for Local Government Finance Ministry of Municipal Affairs. I was confused as to what we were actually asking. And I don't think we were asking the correct right question. In the sentence that says on page 57 of 75, "Will the reduction to tax revenues to assist local economy fit into this or not?" The sentence alludes to an attempt to lower taxes in the future, not as we did in the District of Tumbler Ridge. We reduced business tax rates in 2020 in an effort to get jobs and businesses before the government announced this grant. To me, it's a completely different strategy to combat the effects of COVID-19 than lowering taxes after we find out about this Safe Reset Grant. So I'd like to put a motion on the floor. I actually called Jennifer today and discussed with her what we had done in the District of Tumbler Ridge. And she said that that would qualify. And it would take some accounting. Basically, what she said to me is that because we would have lowered our reserves by not putting that additional half a million dollars that we would have collected in business taxes into our reserves, that is the accounting that they can utilize to give us that half a million dollars out of this grant. So the motion that I have, I'd like to put forward is to ask our CAO and our CFO to discuss options with Jennifer Richardson around accounting ideas, around reserves to be discussed, to try to come up with a solution for a business tax decrease in 2020.
Counselor, discussion. If this were to be accepted, this would pretty much defeat the plan we have seating this year. And I'm making it because it's unstoppable. So let's see. See against taxi in 2021. I think, you know, I definitely understand the desire to for that change. But I also want to prepare to do is how we settle the financial debt for our businesses. So, you know, I don't know if we should be. Oh, new information, Counselor.
So the way this grant works right now, Mayor Bertrand, if we don't spend the money, we don't get the money. So in order for us, if we, we have already spent that money, we have not accounted for it. If we're able to convince the government of this, we can just as easily take that money and put it into the District of Tumbler Ridge as our own COVID-19. And if you want to then at that time deduct masks against it, hand sanitizer, any other thing that we come up with at that time, that's fine. It guarantees us that we get the half a million dollars from the government rather than saying, well, let's just leave it in the government and hope that we can come up with a way to spend all that money. We can just as easily take it, put it in our own reserve account that we call the COVID-19 reserve account and spend it accordingly as we want to. After the two years is up, this thing is no longer available to the District of Tumbler Ridge. We may end up with $320,000 in reserve that we can then spread into our other reserves. We won't lose the money. That's the idea behind it.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. You know, to me, we kind of already lost the money. That was the bulk that council made was to decrease business taxes. And I agree that, yeah, we could, we could look at this to try to put it back. But now we have other areas that money might be in. I think we can, I think we need a little bit of work to make it back. And have a, you know, we haven't really discussed how we're going to spend this money. We haven't had that discussion yet. It can be part of it, maybe half of it or something, but.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. With this money coming in from the government, does, do we feel that we'd be able to spend the entirety of what's left during the next nine months or so?
I doubt it's not a two-year.
Thank you, Mayor. So that's sort of the point that I was looking to, that, you know. I understand counsel's how concerned about losing this money, but I think we can use it forward. And, I mean, personally, with the decision to lower taxes for businesses, that was a decision that was made. And that should be it. It shouldn't be trying to, for me, it seems like we're trying to cover up for that. That's something that this council made the decision on. Let's continue on. That's fine. This is moving forward in COVID world. Thank you, Mayor. I just like to see the district make use of that $800,000, some $50,000. And if, if we can use it somewhere else or get it for other losses, then that's fine. But I still think we need to find areas where we can use this money so that we won't end up not getting any of it. And that's, I wouldn't like to see that. I just think there seems to be a lot of areas where we think, yeah, you'll be able to get part of this grant money. And then they say, oh, no, it's not applicable. So whatever we find, it doesn't matter where it is. If we can get that, any part of that money, we should pursue it. And, you know, if, if we run out before, you know, it ends or terminates, then at least we still have made use of that money. I just don't think we should totally. I understand the money's in the bank. So we don't have to, we just need to, they've given it to us, right? And we just need to use it. There is concern. I see an email phrase, "We do not have a clawback mechanism at this point." And why would you say that unless they might clawback if we use it for inappropriate uses? And don't get me wrong, this, I know this motion is not saying that. This motion is. But at this time, we have an avenue directly in front of us that we can continue on as we thought beforehand. And we won't ever have a clawback mechanism because we can buy this money they've already given us to operation.
Counselor. But if we don't come up with enough places to spend the money, they could claw it back. Or they could at some point say, if you haven't spent the money by the end of 2022, any money that's left over gets transferred back to the government. So this is an opportunity for us to go and just say, hey, we've got a $500,000 touch here. We can take all that money out, put it into our own account. We'll never lose the money. You can still do all the things that you guys want to do. If you want to buy masks or hand sanitizer or change wages or whatever other things you want to do to fight COVID or help COVID, it's in our pockets. It's not something that we have to repay to the government. It's our money. It's sitting there. It's done. We can forget about it. We let our staff put it in a reserve account and we draw the money out of there so we never have a chance of losing the money. It's just to investigate to see if we can actually do that. It sounds to me that we can do it. Why would we take that opportunity? Why would we leave money on the table? Yes, we have it in our account right now, but that doesn't mean it's going to stay in there.
Would not be easy to verify that it's not locked in. Like if it is locked in, we have it. We, you know, we don't have a set, like we could use it from here until the next seven years. Like, I don't know. Like, there is no set guidelines, no template, anything saying we can't spend it all, we have to spend it all, nothing like that. So maybe we should verify that first before trying to lock it into our own tax account. Maybe just verify what the government, and then we don't have to go through the bank here and everything like that.
Thompson can clarify or consider needing to account for it before we get it.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, through council. So we physically have the money. It has been transferred into our account in 2020. We are required for financial purposes to have a schedule that will be on our audited financial statement that will detail what we, what the original amount was and what the eligible costs on. And at this point, it said there is no clawback on it. And we just have to continue to account for the reduction of that funding until it is at zero. Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I didn't get, capture the whole motion there. So if you want to, I can have.
So motion to ask our CAO and CFO to discuss options with Jennifer Richardson around accounting ideas, around reserves to be discussed to try to come up with a solution for our business tax decrease in 2020.
Counselor, questions? Paul, favor. Close. It's really about understanding what the parameters and parameters they have, what we cannot do. Hopefully, they won't take offense to our questions, but. 9.4, draft 2021 capital special projects. For the first 2021 achieved in this state law, so regarding the United and Draft 2021 capital special project. January 25th, 2021. For discussion and others, I would request approval of time sense of the capital and special. So we left off scheduled cabinet.
Put a motion on the floor that we remove the community center front office and lobby upgrades for the 2021 budget.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. When we discussed this previously, we added it to the budget. At that time, we had a lot of information about more, most of it was the effectiveness of the area, the. The ineffectiveness of the area, the potential hazards to the employees working there and the uneconomic area, as well as the inability to assist patients in wheelchairs. So, I mean, at that time, we may be a good plan. And that, as those are already the first of them.
At that time, we did not add it to the budget. We added it to budget discussions. And prior to that time, we also did not see what the renovations were looking like on the bathrooms. The renovations on the bathrooms missed wheelchair accessible sinks and some other issues in that area. We also are in the process of hiring somebody else to come in to look at the community center who may have their own vision on it of what needs to be done in the front desk area. I'm not saying that wheelchair access doesn't need to be done in there, but it doesn't need to be done immediately until we have somebody in there to review. We're having an operational review of the entire community at this time right now. Gordon MacIntosh is in town today, I think, doing an organizational review. We should wait on this to see what the new person that comes into the community center thinks of the front desk. And we should also give our new CAO some time to look at it, to see if we actually need to do this at this time. Maybe we do need to do it, maybe we don't. I just think we should leave it in the hands of the people that do this type of stuff to say, hang on, let's have a look at this. Do we actually need to spend this kind of money? That's a lot, that's quarter million dollars. That's a lot of money if we're not upgrading to the front entrance there. Honestly, I don't think it needs to be done. We haven't, the community center hasn't really increased that much and especially not during this time. So to me, I think we can hold off on it for this year. If it becomes apparent that we need it, then we put it in 2022. But at this time, it's not needed.
Counselor Kirk.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. My thing is, why hold off on it? So my questions that Counselor Howell brought out, you know, go to the review, possibly hiring a new director and all this. But that doesn't change that can be in the budget. I mean, to me, I was in, talked to Mr. Thompson today, but we had a bit of a discussion. I mean, the plans still have to come forward and stuff like that. I'd say why pull it under the, under the budget? I mean, we constantly keep pulling these things under the budget, whether it's the upgrades to the lobby, upgrades to the community center, whether it's the building envelopes and all that, and we keep pushing them back, pushing them back. I'm not willing to support that. I think we need to move forward on some of these concepts. Counsel keeps asking staff to bring forward. You know, I don't think that staff is going to do it tomorrow. It's not even in the, it's not even in the preapproval. So it's something that I think we can leave in the budget and it can still come back. We're having another meeting. I'm not sure where staff is in regards to review and all that. But I think it should be left in there and can be taken out later in time if, if staff comes forward and says it's not needed and this is why. Well, then it can be removed before it's approved.
Thank you, Counselor Kirby.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I believe it needs to remain in the budget as well. I do hope to see a, like, refresh on the plans being made. We do have accessibility issues. So I should remain there as well.
Thank you, Mayor. I think before we go ahead with any of this, I'd like to see the plans and see what exactly they plan to do. $250,000, it's another one of these things where we're building a castle. We don't really need a castle. I mean, we almost seem to be going high end on everything we do. Everything, everything has to look like we're in downtown Vancouver. We're in Tumbler Ridge, for God's sake. And I'm not saying we don't want it to look nice. But I think we've got to be careful of how much money we spend on these projects. And, I mean, we do have somebody new coming in to that position. I think they should definitely have some input. But before, I would definitely like to see what the plans are, what they're going to, what they want to do with this rec center for that present. Plans are there. And like, I don't think we should be holding on this process because we can't remember the documents that we already saw and put into the budget. I remember, you know, and I apologize for that. It's something they get passionate about and I remember. But like, there are some serious issues over there, right? Like the doorways aren't light enough. The counter where people come up to, you can't help a person in a wheelchair. There are more people in wheelchairs every few months, like, because I know them, I see them. Like, we already had an issue downstairs where handicap, where handicapped accessible. So, you know, I think Counselor Kirk does correct me. If there are changes that need to be done. We can make changes, but I mean, at this time, we shouldn't be keep putting this, putting these things off because these changes need to be done.
There was $60,000 allocated last year for community center front office. And that was the remaining money that hadn't been spent. I'm not exactly sure. I could go back and look at invoices to see what that money was, but at this time, I don't know what it was. But it was, there was a $60,000 allocation last year. And this is a carryforward of that remaining money. and this is a carryforward of that remaining money.
Any questions, counsel? Other question on the motion, volunteer. Counselor Kirk.
Thank you, Mr. So just when I asked staff for any, where are we at in regards to report back to counsel? What we budgeted for last year? So that could explain some of this $49,500 that we budgeted. $60,000 over on plans and we only spent $10,000 on it or not?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, through counsel. So we are planning on bringing it back. Our budget meeting was last week, which our cutoffs were done. We're ready for next week already. So it would be the week after that I'm hoping to have that information to counsel. So in two weeks, we will be trying to pull those reports and get it to counsel. So the intention is to get it to you as soon as we're able.
So just on that, is there a way of doing it quicker for next year? What we budgeted for 2021 and what was actually spent? When we were certain budgets in 2022? And that, to me, is huge. Well, if we're budgeting for something that didn't get done, to me, I want to know what reason, whether it's the sign, both still hasn't been done, trees planted over at Roman Walk, stuff like that. This is the budget. Budget is for it. So I'm kind of curious, but I'd like to go back and find out why something. It would be the same thing if we budgeted $60,000 for the community center. Not sure where it's for, that's fine. Is there something that we thought was getting done that didn't get done yet? Right? That's, to me, that's why I think it's important. I mean, I'm sorry, I don't remember anything that's written by law. Everybody does.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. We will do our best to get those. They would still be preliminary numbers for when we're at budget deliberations at this point. I mean, I do have an idea and a plan in place that I'd like to move things back a little bit and to get you the information that you need. They would still be preliminary numbers, but we would be able to bring something like that back at the beginning of budget discussions to let you know where we're at.
Any other items counsel got to discuss?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I will have Director Beal respond to that. Director Beal.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, Mayor Counsel. So this is the final stages of the land title through the government land titles office process. So there is a cost to that, to transfer those lands over to the district.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Mr. Beal.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, Mayor Counsel. So my understanding of the work that's been done is everything's up to the final stage. And that final stage is to transfer that land title over to the district or prepare that for the district to consider. Because I still haven't had a cost on what that land is, although it's useless to anybody else. The government needs to come back to us to say, well, this is going to be the cost. So this is the final paperwork and documents to get to them.
Nothing about that, but if we're going to get ready to vote on F, can we just get confirmation of what is in and what is out at this point?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Yes, you are correct. At the last meeting, the curling rink subfloor had been removed from the schedule.
I'm just wondering, when we put these out for tender, do they know what the budget is?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, through counsel. So our budget documents are, these schedules are actually posted on our meeting packages and everything. So if somebody wanted to see what that amount was that was approved by counsel, they would be able to find that document. However, when we are doing bids and everything, or when we send out for quotes and requests and that, it still is based on contract price. So they can guess what it is based on what this is. But counsel also has the ability to say reject all your bids as well, right?
It just seems to me that, take the museum roof, for example. It's $400,000. Somebody looks at that and goes, oh, okay, I'm good with this. It'll be $412,000. Thank you very much. Have a nice day. I, to me, that seems somewhat ludicrous because you take the, you almost make it too easy for these contractors to say, okay, this is what it's going to cost. If I was trying to get somebody to build my house, I'm going to tell them the budget that I have, but I'm certainly not going to tell, you know, like, especially when you have high speed estimates where they're usually high. I just, I, I don't know. I have a problem with that. I think there's, there's got to be a better way of, or some way of not giving them that information so that they're starting from ground zero.
There is definitely some concern about that. Well, St. John is kind of a little different to be in not posting there. I'm just talking to you, so. It might be something that staff could estimate. See if that's an option, possibly. First, the museum roof, $400,000. The clearing system is all certainly not. We do have the option to reject. Counselor Norby.
Okay. You know, canceling it does make a good point. Also then, hopefully, we have some healthy competition. Someone, you know, bids under that, so we get a lot of the attention and to keep people honest. But whatever we decide to do, I do think it's important to maintain transparency within our community. Right? So like having all X, X, and X. It's like, we do need to have some transparency with the community to see what's going down. So it's like the byline, right? I do have to try to say, but it's not, we still want to let people know what our estimated budget.
Yeah, that's what our estimates need to. It's accurate, it's possible.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And to Counselor Norby's point, the people of Tumble Ridge know what it costs after if somebody has ways of finding it out. They know where, how much money is spent and where it's spent. Yeah, I'd just like to know how we direct staff to look at the options. So I have been following Fort St. John. And obviously, it's marked as XXX in the capital budgets because I think they think the same thing. People are looking at what the council, the city council is doing and going, well, now we know what the bid. I believe that's happening in our own community. Well, if you know electrical is going to be this much somewhere here or the building is going to be this much funded for, why not just be at the top dollar? Probably going to get it. Right? So I mean, I know this year it's a little tough. But I think we should find out how we look at that direction. And maybe, you know, yourself through the P R D or Counselor Kirby, reaching out and asking Fort St. John how it worked after budget's been done on their side. It'll get the perspective from the council so I can see what they thought about just the staff stuff.
Counselor Kirby.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Do these projected costs include a contingency fund?
I believe so, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. In some cases, yes, there are contingencies and engineering fees built into the costs. In other cases, we, you know, staff does have an amount that we know that we received a quote that that is the amount. But in a lot of our cases, there is engineering contingencies that are built in.
Yeah, I can see why I just come up with the number $400,000 for the museum roof. So many variables there. Greenage issues, slants, what kind of roof you've got to have a different. If you're having people bid on these jobs, they're going to be preparing all the samples. And when you have a low bid, you don't know if they're going to be using, you know, a long-term torton roof or if it would be insulation and anything else that needs to be done. It's all greened. So to say, yeah, we've got that budgeted, it could be well under that. Especially when we go utilize our policy with our P process and having three bidders come in. Now, hopefully, we'd have a lot more than that. You know, if you have to come down.
Yeah, it's all the motion that counsel directs staff to test through. City of Fort St. John's confidential upper. Senator, Counselor Hall. Discussion. On favor, close. Gary. This is the only portion that counsel approved schedule F. Community services including belt course boundary extension 2021. Capital and special projects as amended. Secondary, Counselor Norby. Schedule. Volunteer. Close.
Yeah, so part of the, like, to the budget and stuff. And I get it's kind of crazy and I didn't get a chance. I shouldn't have reached out to him at the last meeting. That's the road rescue combi tool. If maybe staff could just, at our next meeting, just bring forward that information. And if it doesn't get a grant, not buy it, but get that concept, is it needed? Well, if it's a grant, oh, we're going to get it because it's a grant. There's nothing. Get to have F to the tool, which I don't blame them. But is it also needed? Because if it's not, if it's needed and, yeah, a grant, get it free. Let's all wait, maybe passport next year. If it's sometimes needed, it should definitely come out. And I'm not a big fan of waiting for grant if anyone comes to a rescue set of two. That's the only one I pick up on.
I agree. My only question, Ms. Thompson, is if you have any dates.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. We do have, so we do have applications in. Some of them are spring, right? So we know that they'll be announced in the spring. I'm not sure on the road rescue combi tool when that announcement will be. Chief Curry would have that information. But most of these are, we'll know when this spring.
It's important for counsel to know if they are approved or disapproved for grants as well. I really like how you separated these as grant dependent. I like that part of it so that it's not as confusing as it has been in the past. I think it is important to confirm whether or not. Questions or comments, counsel? Counselor Hall.
Yeah, just on the reserves on the back page, right?
Yes.
There's listed in there, I assume it's a R C and B building, unexpended funds in reserve, almost $100,000. Can I get some explanation on what that's for? I thought the R C and B building was a federally funded building and why would we have to be putting money aside for?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, through counsel. So, yeah, you know, we do have these bylaws that we're setting aside these monies. And this is unexpended funds bylaw number 11. So that was created, you know, at the very beginning of when the district was creating bylaws. So I haven't had that ability yet to go through and pull those bylaws and read them and provide the additional information to counsel. I just wanted to bring this forward to say that this money is here. So I don't know what's in the bylaw yet at this time. But I will be, you know, digging into that and bringing that information forward to counsel.
Ms. Thompson has been investigating those and finding some. As you can see, the additions. So it's on the right, add it to the call on the left. Some of the bylaws she sounds like. I think it was.
I think so. Thank you.
Yeah, all times. Counselor.
I think it's, I like this format as it lays out a little bit better to anywhere money is. I know that a lot of people think they're just a big empty bank account with all this stuff in there. So I appreciate this coming through. And I'm interested to see what those bylaws have to say about the unexpended funds and how we can be using them for purposes.
In reading over this schedule, I was kind of contemplating seeing what counsel's labor was to possibly create bylaws to add to some of these reserve funds that we could see to use in the future. To the point, having a reserve fund differently than adding to it doesn't really make sense to me. And one other question, Ms. Thompson. These funds aren't quite being interested as it appears.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So we do have this, the reserve funds we have here are somewhat tied to what our investments are, but not fully. So yes, there is interest on them, but that interest at this time is just going into our general account. It doesn't get allocated back into the reserve. And I would like to note, too, that I didn't find all this information on my own. Ms. Sanders is the one that brought it to my attention and we were looking at it. So it wasn't, it wasn't my doing. It was Ms. Sanders. So.
Counselor Hall.
Thank you. Do you mention a mode of bylaw for adding or whatever to some of these reserves? I believe there is actually a bylaw already for certain reserves to get so much of the surplus percentage. If staff can confirm that, there is now.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, through counsel. So we do have the, I think, I believe it's the policy on the stabilization, reserve for tax stabilization. I'm not sure if that's bylaw, but I do know that there is a policy on that that puts a certain amount there. And these are things that I'm looking into more. And I apologize, I don't have all the information for you.
Yeah, I have, that's a question for me. We're all reviews. I think we really all understand our reserve account and how it can be looked down and how it is inefficient. Any other questions, comments?
So that town hall building envelope is what's in the budget for $11,500. Is that? That's just the update, the costs, is that what we're doing there? That makes sense, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, through council. So correct, that is updating the costs.
Follow up.
Oh, of the envelope, sorry.
Yeah, so like we've got three, two other envelopes as well, public works building, fire hall building. Is there any reason why we wouldn't do them all at the same time to get the information? Or what's, what's the rush on doing town hall up over the other two?
Ms. Thompson?
That, oh, sorry, thank you, Mayor Bertrand, through council. So that money is for the envelope that was upgraded, and that was to get to the grant application. So technically, that money has already been spent in order to do the grant application of January 27th. And the town hall, town hall building envelope was the only one that was at that point yet. So the other ones are coming, but we don't need preapproval for them.
Any comments or questions? All the question, all in favor? Close, Gary. Councilor for Congress?
Thank you, Mr. Trump. So since we're still on the budgeting and stuff, I can ask a little math. The reason I asked actually, what was budgeted for 2020, I know our budget isn't, stuff hasn't been completed, like, I know we have threw certain garbage cans to be wrapped and stuff like that. Where does that, because it's not even backing here on the budget as a carryover, on the, on the economic development. That stuff was all approved in last year's budget as well, including some of the wraps of the garbage cans and stuff, and town hall for it, and not completed. So where are we at on this stuff?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, through council. That is one that I will have to look into, because I believe that the full budget had been spent on what was, what the budget was, so therefore, there was no carry forward. So that is something that I will look deeper into.
But there's no bins been wrapped downtown. So it was to wrap garbage cans and stuff like that, so to me, those budget goes after either of the projects, where you start. That's my concern with not having that report. I get it's not maybe a hundred percent, but it continues on until the end of the year, or this is the year first, but not having that sheet in front of us really tough not to find out what we planned for 2020, what we budgeted for 2020, which we haven't done. There's multiple, to me, there's multiple items that never have completed in 2020, and I'd be very curious to find out how we will do that. One's a garbage can, side folds, curving land, Roman walkway, I mean, there's many I can aim off. That's why I'm concerned that budgeting for all this stuff, it's not getting completed. Are we playing too much on Scott's plate? And are we still doing the same thing by adding more and more items into the 2021 budget?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, through council. Regarding the garbage can wrapping, I'll have Mr. Beal respond to that, he would have more detail on it. Mr. Beal?
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Uh, thank you, Ms. Thompson, Mayor Council. So the last year's, uh, what do you say, the commercial bin wrap project included the district vehicle and bin wrap. When I got the initial quotes in for the bin wraps, they were relatively low, which was where the budget was, where the budget was determined. When I got those quotes again to actually do the work, they were tripled. So it wouldn't fall within that budget. So the only thing that got spent over that budget would be the vehicle wrap, which is the council vehicle. All right, sorry to council, is I haven't had time to redo that, that project, because there's a little bit of work involved. I also tried to include the VC hydro kiosks, electrical kiosks as well, in that project, but unfortunately, I didn't have time to research it anymore, so.
I think it is still a council approved project that still needs to be followed. Any other questions? Schedule A B is February and March 2021.
So I don't have any answer, I'm just wondering when we see the grant for service given. This would be marked till we know.
So the next letter being the constantly operational, correct, the last one in March, it's the service.
Sorry? Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, February 22nd. And fee for service.
All grant name, fee for service is done on the 27th with operational?
Is that correct, Ms. Thompson?
Correct.
Is that the schedule? What's the motion? I have one, I'll read it. Councilor Howe, what's forward, the following motion of January 21, council?
So I don't have that in my agenda. The recommendation that staff to provide a monthly cost to keep the ice cream on some April day, awesome to him.
Secondary, surgery, discussion. Ms. Thompson?
I support the motion in the, I know we've got the use of the ice. The, 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 it might be.
Yeah, I support it. The only concern I have is once we get the numbers back and this report goes forward, it'd be nice to see, we also put our ice back in, obviously. So really, and truly, we're looking, I mean, there's cost to take it out, manpower and all that, there's money to put back in, so I think that needs to be looked at, too. When this report comes back, it might be cheaper for staff or for the town to keep it in, instead of bringing a company in to reinstall or restart the plant.
It's really hard to see, to be honest. Ever hired a train for summer months, so. Councilor?
Well, yeah, but if we have in June, you'll have an idea of cost, sure to read it and come back and say it's the cost is thirty thousand dollars to restart the plant, or it may cost you twenty five dollars. So I'm just hoping for that option, right? Instead of taking the ice out, a bunch of manpower for one month to reinstall it six weeks later.
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah, in our whole engineering report, it showed how much kilowatts was used for each individual, they had to break down those arena and crink and if we got how that is gonna have a dollar now, you need to give the equipment, I think C I P is a part of all during the summer months of higher temperature, sorry, or temperature.
Any comments, questions? All in favor? Close. Twenty-two airport closures, council for Congress, what's forward, the following motion, three, 21, council?
Council requests staff to provide report regarding frequency of closure of the airport with detail and duration, and provide options to reduce closures, including budget impacts of increased service length.
Council, discussion. All in favor? Close, Gary. Counselors' business, sorry, Councilor.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, I'd like to add a motion for next agenda.
Yes, please.
The council schedules a closed meeting to discuss alignment of course and committee.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, any other motions? My counsel's business. Thank you, Councilor Kirby, Councilor Murray, for your reports. Councilor?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I'd just like to add more information, I attended the Superdome Regional District Meeting last Thursday. Minister Josie Osborne was receiving calls from cities and municipalities regarding minister calls that they have with mayors in the north, bringing up concerns for the communities. Mayor Bertrand on that call on Summerland brought up the concern of connectivity for remote rural communities, whistled to that. There was many concerns brought up by communities on mental health, tourism, tourism businesses just going broke and having to shut down. There's some places where little tree planters in the summer are coming in, and how that'll, you know, just withhold it. How communities are having to enforce the health orders that are being brought down and the, and just the money being spent on that to recruit costs, RCMP, like the cost of RCMP detachments are going up. Just to name a few, I think infrastructure grants a lot of support, that was great. A thank you for the, for not shutting the borders for communities like Johnson Creek Center Socials, Alberta, just how that would work if the premier was to have shut borders down. So those are just some of the highlights from that. There is also, Ministry of Transportation was there, and directors voiced concerns about the pine pass road conditions being a class A road, and that people are not traveling it, and that it really puts some stress on communities that need people that work, medical, or just work in general, and that people are choosing not to because they're afraid to travel. That's just really not acceptable. So there's a lot of kind of concerns raised there. So those are just a couple of things I want to add.
Yes, thank you very much, for attending, and take care of the ministers as well. Your counsel's business, Councilor Howe?
I just have a question about a letter that was placed on our desks previous to, before the previous meeting that we had. So there's a letter placed on our desk that has to do with the development of the wildfire risk reduction fuel management prescriptions for seven treatment areas. One of the areas in particular is on the slope that has the bald spot on it. Do we have any information about that, or is there any reason why this letter wouldn't have made it into our agenda for today, or will it be on our next agenda for discussion?
Certainly could, yeah. I'm sure why it hasn't.
Yeah, so that, that was me to put the letter on the wicket, it's not staff. I had residents reach out, and I moved the information, I know I've talked to Council Novia regards to committee board, a bunch of information they had on it. I did contact staff, I asked if it could be put into correspondence at next meeting, and I've been told it would be, but it's because I put it on the wicket, it wasn't directed to, to staff from the resident. And we just need to confirm he was fine with it being left on it. That's why I wanted to, you wanna blame staff, I think you blame that.
Councilor?
Yeah, no, I just want, the, once the proper time to discuss this, and if it's gonna be on the agenda for our next meeting, is that the idea here?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, I'll discuss it at that time.
Okay, thank you. I believe Councilor Murray gets some answers to some of the questions that we had. I have a few meetings. One, I had met Chief Boyd over Zoom, so go for a session. First time meeting, excellent gentleman, very similar to myself, first time on council, and I'm the chief, so had a really good conversation with him, and developed that relationship, particularly building on it, so it's nice to meet him and congratulate him on his election there. Also had the Zoom meeting with the Center of Training Excellence in mine. I've accepted a volunteer community position for the Skills Roadmap Project, part of the governance committee, and subcommittee, subcommittee is the goal of the Triangle area. So this is a spot from the Army Jobs Task Force, recommendations. That was a part of, this was one of the recommendations over to create a roadmap for future skills and needs for the mining industry. Exciting, Eric. Also attended the U C National Resources last week. One of the presentations, panelist was the CEO, Brian Sullivan. He had some very nice words to say about the town of Ridge and each other, rest to partnerships we created and cooperation and support that we are doing each other always. He also made mention of interesting statistics, that just about one-third of the workforce is female. So it's definitely a focus of the mining industry to become more equal, equal opportunities for everybody, so. Also, just to side note, part of the Skills Roadmap Project, it is also a ministry part of the industry of that, so.
Yeah, so I don't have any counsel business, but I'd like to move the 13.2 up for drill.
Yes. Did you receive any questions, are you?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, no, I did not.
And 13.2 of the.
Councilor Howe? Yeah, just wanted to go back to that letter that we received, that it's actually some perjury, that it is a time sensitive response is required. It asks for feedback from the individual that this is addressed to by February 5th, so we wouldn't have time at our next meeting to discuss our response as a council. So I don't, I don't know how we would, we would approach that, but as far as I know, this letter was never given to our council. Our council has no idea that there's a thinning procedure or logging procedure going to happen on that slope. So I have grave concern about that, it's directly in our area, and we weren't told about it. So I don't know how we would approach that, but I'd like to see what council's flair is on that.
Yeah, we definitely do our best to defend this on that land, that's one of our music groups, quality, the Trail Run, and we have council agreed to send us a letter, and we get funding for it, which is within the same ministry that we get the money from, and they're going to thin it. So we'd like to know when they're starting to do the thinning, otherwise that's gonna delay the music group time to build, and that, and we'd like to know when that money is available as well. So I think it's kind of sensitive on both parts, and for nowhere, who is in charge of this, such as the Fort Nelson branch, or Fort St. John branch, or Smothers, so we're all the same as communication and stuff are, and you guys know what we have the information, because there was a lot of outreaches within our community about that special area, and nothing has spoken about that since 2021. So this might have been new to this year for funding that came available for them to do this fire treatment or fire mitigation program, but none of the. But none of the parties were probably approached. And then we just, you know, we even have the law, quote, that I won't say other part of the bridge has been notified or not. It would be worth looking into, helping to other.
Counselor, did the district receive the letter or plan this?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. The district did not receive any paper copy or any email. I, through my email, we searched through, there's nothing there. If council would like to review this before, you can create a special meeting or have, or request a phone call with the ministry prior to the fifth to have that discussion.
Counselor Hall.
So perhaps another idea would be, would be tonight that we, we come together as council to say that we would like to at least formulate a response to this letter to say that we haven't had a chance to review the letter because it's never come to us. It's only come from a resident. And we won't have time by February fifth to respond, which is what they've asked for. But that we ask them to give us more time so we can discuss it at our Monday meeting and we will, we will give them a proper response once we've had time to review it. But I, I think it's important that we tell them that we don't know anything about this, we're absolutely concerned about it, that we, especially that we weren't told about it. So that we have some time to review it. Like, to me, that would be probably a good move. It gives everybody a chance to talk about it at that time. Maybe we aren't concerned, but at least we get in before the timeline to say that there is some concern and you never consulted us, so you need to give us a little bit more time so we can figure it out.
They're all agreeing that it is a concern, not necessarily, but the lack of. Counselor Hall.
Yeah, so I'd like to put a motion forward that we direct staff to formulate a response to the letter that's on our wickets here. Requesting more time for the feedback and response by February fifth, 2021.
And I think it's absolutely pertinent that all of the residents and community know or are aware of this as well. Yeah, it could be an impact, it could be a destructive with equipment, hearing, people. And is there going to be job protections within our community forest as well, just across all of our previous concern with what's going on in our backcountry? Is it going to be helping out our community and our residents and maybe have a job creation project? I didn't hear from that, so being worthwhile, seeing what. Also, again, yeah, for information, maybe even look into asking or non-profit groups here. Because you never know, like, if you ask geologists or geologists and there might be water concerns or whatever, right? So there's a lot going on there.
Mayor Bertrand, I think we have a meeting this coming week for a coffee meeting where some councils are available to go and and see, and it's on their upcoming wildlife work in the area. So obviously, there is, there has been some notification to the community forests, so maybe find out a little bit, you know, ask them specific questions about that.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I think it's important to help. Anytime forest comes up, the community forest, if, I think it's important to notice this. So there is a lot of stakeholder engagement with this. The, this is done through the wild car branch of the, of Sunmark, this is not going to be a form. Actually express our concerns with this, lack of, the lack of engagement with their community. Maybe this is their response to that, but yeah, we should be getting involved and talking, just, just making sure that that area is still usable for our residents. But if we have any preconceived, like, ideas, should recognize this is wild car mitigation, like, safety. Safety is current up to, what's the phrase, safety trumps.
Certainly, I, I'm pleased with our population, my concern. Should we solve the water pack? Yeah, certainly. Counselor Hall.
Yeah, and that's exactly my concern is, is, it is still a safety aspect. If we have that runoff, we can have mudslides, we can have flooded basements, we can have, you know, another concern is, is for bears in the area. Are you reducing the amount of berries they eat up in that area? Now the bears come into town looking for berries again. All these issues that we've always had, that's why they're supposed to engage with us. We're the people that live here, we're the people that know the, that have, we represent those people and we haven't been engaged. This is just terrible that they would do that, you know, and, and to further that point, it's, it's. We, we spent, how, how long did we spend on talking about doing a small 50-meter cut behind some homes in the Debbie Tumbler Ridge? Just to see if we could divert some water or prevent a little bit of water? We spent a ton of time talking about that. And for them to be able to come in and log off and the tires, you know, something hillside or whatever their plans are to do in there without consultation? Like, to me, they've got an absolute lawsuit on their hands if they go and do that. We know that there's issues up in that area. They should listen to us. And not only that, there's the First Nation area up there as well. Right? Our First Nation partners have decided that they want a piece of land that's over there. Have they been consulted about this? You know, do they want their area that they want to buy to put in homes or houses or whatever the heck they want to do with it? Do they want that logged off before they come and get it? I certainly think not. Well, I've seen their underbrush cleaned up around the district of Tumbler Ridge and it is logging and then the wind blew all the trees over and we got nothing but dead falls, so.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I just want to say thank you to the individual that came up and gave this to a counselor and brought it forward. It was in their mailbox, so, you know, it may, it may not seem like a big deal, but, you know, bringing it forward for, for review is crucial, counsel. Thank you for saying something.
Okay, hold question, I'm emotional, please. Close. Follow-up actions with. All right, please. Counselor.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, how's that moved up at all? Get hard to turn the top of it? But I do have a couple of questions. And that's the geotech requirement in the district contract for pump truck. This says February of 2021. Do we have a set date to have that discussion, the, the, the cost of doing the, the geotech for the pump truck location?
I gotta remove myself for that one.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand through council. So February 2021 is the targeted date. We are currently getting quotes right now for the cost of the geotech. We should have a report for the council meeting for the 16th. At the time when we had put it in there, it was for February of 21 or on track, but I just didn't have the date updated yet.
Follow-up.
So approximately in February is when we'll see a report?
Correct.
So we're here.
Yes.
That's just report on the cost?
On the cost of the geotech.
There's been.
Just wondering, I know it was brought up by a council that the geotech, the cost of the geotech, because that land will come back to the district. Will, will there be a recommendation in there that the district will assume the cost of the geotech?
Ms. Thompson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Bertrand through council. So, you know, we were, we reviewed the, the contract and that is a standard clause that is within all district contracts. So it's not something that council or, sorry, that staff, it will recommend to remove. So we're, we're finding the ways around it, saying this is the cost. The district can completely look at paying the cost of the geotech and it will be included in the report.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So then with a decision after you made and then a, a key act come in, so is there a timeframe on when that would happen? Because with the TRBA, they're looking to look at having our people just go out for the bid for the build. They do have a builder to wind up. They would like to lock that in sooner than later, otherwise that builder will be elsewhere. And if 21, 2021 isn't available to do the build, then a lot of the grants that they have applied for will be committed. So if, if they could have, TRBA could have a timeframe of when they could know when geotech is done, then they could have a real time to get around it. Just a peace of mind, most likely.
And then maybe, Counselor. Thank you. Counselor. Is it in regards to the geotech? Counselor, in regards to the geotech, yes? Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. So just on that, when you say it's just in our general contract, is there a way, whether it's a motion or not, that we need to be putting a motion out there that staff looks at contracts based on individuals, so I just use the same contract? Like, I mean, to me, I have an issue because pump trucks district owned, I mean, we're not building it, we're not doing the fundraising, we're not doing any of it. Being built by another organization, but it's the district. They're building, to me, they're building for the district numbers. So like, when we have these, just these general contracts that we use, whatever group, is there a way, putting a motion forward or some kind of direction staff needs? So we're looking at them a little bit more one, based on one-on-one for certain groups, just so it's not the same contract? Because me, when it's district only after it's built, we should cover some costs. I mean, that's not even a question. We should cover.
Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, your counsel. So this contract was, sorry, drafted by legal, that did have that, that in there. And when we went back and looked at previous contracts the district had, it was kind of like a standard clause that it did have in there. So this was drafted by legal, but, you know, it, it definitely could be worded differently, that if it is district owned or district would continue to own it, that the, you know, we can put it in the contract for the geotech to be paid for by the district at that time. But I also just want to note, at this time, the contract still isn't signed with TRMBA. And so we're trying, we're, this is finding our way forward on the district doing the geotech or not, which can be written into the contract. And there's also one other clause in there that, to be signed off by a professional engineer. And in this case, it's not professional engineers, but it is industry experts for the mountain bike association to build. So that we have to get the word on that and then the contract, I think those are the only two items on the contract that the, the TRMBA were having concerns with at this time.
Oh, so I guess what follow-up is, do we need to wait for a report to come back in regards to the geotech or not? If the contract's not signed by the organization, do we not make a motion that the district of Tumbler Ridge is going to cover the geotech costing? Do we not do that tonight? I will put a motion forward that the district of Tumbler Ridge covers the geotech requirements for the pump truck, Tumbler Ridge Mountain Bike Association.
Second, Counselor Kirby. Another discussion. All in favor? Close. Very. Can you get, Counselor, please? Should have, should have. Any other comments, questions, votes, people? Counselor.
So just in regards to the new part of Geo and Turf Center, firm counsel for a plan, January 21.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand through council. So that's January of 21, which was our estimated time. However, with staffing shortages right now, it just hasn't hit the top of our list. But that had to do with the restaurant and whether or not it would be taxed, so it's on our list. We just, our time right now, we just haven't gotten it done. Apologize.
This hasn't been updated.
Yeah, I don't think I can apologize. Thank you for your, for your reply in regards to, to staff and issue and they'll come, I just want to make sure we're not holding up the, again, that group from moving forward on whatever they're doing. I don't think it's two times that's on their side. I mean, I don't know that for sure, but again, just, just noticed the dating, so I appreciate the response that staff.
Any comments, questions for you? Counselor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering about the lot expansion policy. Because I keep getting questions on that.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So staff is currently looking at the lot expansion criteria that we had looked at to, to expand it. And, you know, we do have spring of 2021, we're working on it. I don't have a definitive date for it yet, but it is on our radar for this spring.
Thank you.
Counselor.
New, new library board appointments. I just wanted to clarify if it's.
I need to make a statement, don't I?
Sure.
I have to excuse myself to do a, can I interest?
I just wanted to follow up on the procedure away of letting the board members know that there are new appointees. Is it through our C A O or is it through Yazzal Biazan?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand through council. I'll just confirm our procedure.
Thank you. So we do advise the librarian of the appointments and from there it, it goes out. So it wasn't our previous practice to, to do, to let each member know, but the librarian has been sent the information, just as I had, would be as the C A O.
Okay, so it doesn't go to the board first then?
The information is provided to the employee, the librarian, yeah.
Won't say concerned, but to me, if we're appointing board members of council, to me, I think we should be checking up the president of the, of the board. May not be employee that works for the board?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I do understand your, the question and that we have a way of, we can change our, our practice. It would kind of be the same as somebody sending me information and me bringing that correspondence to council, right? So we may have to change and address it differently. So we are sending the information to the head librarian that, with the expectation that it would go to the board, but maybe we could just change the, the detail on it.
Any other, anything else? Thank you, counsel. Adjournment, recognition, please, Counselor.
That's the February, that's February 3, 21, they're participating, be adjourned.
Second, Counselor. All in favor? Close. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Phil. All good evening.
Good night, Doug.
Have a good night, Doug.